Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the study session for September 28th. We have quite a bit of stuff on our agenda, so we got started. I'd like to welcome everybody, and I'll turn it over to our superintendent, and she can introduce people. But first, we have the interpretation announcement.
Thank you. Buenas tardes. Los participantes pueden escuchar la interpretación al español en vivo de las reuniones del Comité de Educación a través de conferencia telefónica. Por favor, llamen al 303-867-0199. Una vez más. Por favor, llamen al 303-867-0199. Cuando lo indique, ingrese el código 366589 seguido por la tecla de número. Una vez más, el código es 366589 seguido por la tecla de número. Cuando lo indique, por favor diga su nombre seguido una vez más por la tecla de número. Asegúrese de bajar el volumen en su computadora o dispositivo donde esté escuchando o observando la reunión. Las opciones en subtítulos o closed captioning. YouTube ofrece subtítulos en una variedad de idiomas para videos cuando los vean posteriormente, no en vivo. Para ver un video en YouTube con subtítulos en español en su idioma de preferencia, por favor haga clic en la CC en la esquina inferior derecha de su pantalla de YouTube. Haga clic en el icono de configuraciones o settings en la parte inferior derecha de su pantalla de YouTube. Haga clic en Auto Translate or English y seleccione el idioma de su preferencia. Todas las agendas y minutas del Comité de Educación se encuentran en la página web del Comité de Educación dentro de la página principal de ADAMS 14. Muchas gracias.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, team. Thank you for being here today. Today, we have two items in our agenda. We're going to dedicate a good amount of time to our data presentation. It was requested from our board members to have the data presented again, answering a little bit more questions. The data originally was presented back in the month of June, and there were additional questions to it. So it was a request to wait for the new data so that we do all at once. And today, we're gonna... The team has worked very hard in presenting data. There is going to be opportunities for any questions that you have to ask. The idea of having just, you know, just two items on the agenda is to ensure that we are dedicating enough time for the data presentation and for clarifying any questions that you may have. And also, following that, we're going to have the presentation of three schools. Kearney Middle School, Adam City Middle School, and Lester Arnold High School. They will be presenting their UIP, their Unified Improvement Plan, for their schools. This is, as you will remember, last year, there were presentations from all schools presenting their UIPs. We wanted to make sure that we could actually probably bring a few one day and then bring the rest of the schools on our October 12 meeting so that you can ask enough questions as well. UIPs are due to the, to CDE, to the state, on October 15th. So on October 12, and when we finish all the presentations and you... We answer all the questions that you may have, you can consider taking action on this on the 12. So those are the two items today. We will start with a data presentation because the data will actually, once you hear about it, it's actually going to be linked and aligned to the UIP and the strategies from the schools. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce to you Ms. Sheila Burke, our Chief Academic Officer, who is going to lead us through and walk us through the presentation.
Thank you, Superintendent Loria. Good evening, Madam President Lewis, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Loria again, and then our viewing audience. As Dr. Loria shared, my name is Sheila Burke, and I serve as the Chief Academic Officer for our school district. I'm joined tonight by some of my colleagues, both from the school level and from the district level, to go through our two presentations tonight. In front of you, you're going to see two folders. We're going to begin with the Assessment Data folder as that information is then going to lead into the Unified Improvement Plan, or what we refer to as the UIP. In your Assessment folder, you're going to find tonight's presentation that our viewing audience at home is able to see, and then our audience here as well. We left it open so that you can take notes on there. Behind your data presentation is another document that we are going to reference and utilize. This is our District Performance Framework from 2019. This is from the Colorado Department of Education. And the page that I would like to reference the most and that we'll be utilizing through tonight's presentation is going to be the last page. The last page specifically is going to align to some of the colors that you're going to see on the chart to help us give us a visual representation of where our schools are currently performing, where our district overall is performing, and how it relates to our school perform... or in District Performance Frameworks and the categories as it relates to our accountability system provided by the Colorado Department of Education. In addition, we have pens and paper and sticky notes, as well as highlighters, for you to be able to go through tonight's study session for your convenience. And then we also will go into our Unified Improvement Plan, which is the second folder that you have, followed by our school presentations. At this time, I'd like to turn our presentation over to our Manager of Assessment, Ms. Michelle Gennaro. Before she begins, we're going to ask you to hold your questions at the end and write them down so that we can go through the presentation in its entirety, and then we'll be able to go back to any questions that you have as we conclude our presentation. Ms. Gennaro?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Good evening, Madam President, distinguished members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Loria. I'm Michelle Gennaro, Manager of Assessment. And I'm here this evening to present our 2021 end-of-year state assessment data, as well as our beginning-of-year data from our local district assessments. First, we will begin with participation rates from our 2021 state assessments. This past spring, because of COVID, the state limited the assessment students were required to take. Literacy or English Language Arts was required in grades three, five, seven, and nine through 11. Math was required in grades four, six, eight, and nine through 11. Science was required in grade eight. And WEDA access for ELLs was required for all English Language learners in grades K through 12. On the next slide, this chart shows district CMAS participation rates from the spring. The first table on the top of your screen shows participation rates for math and then literacy. The first column in the table shows the date. Then, moving across the table to the right, you will see the participation percentage. Continuing to the right, you will see the number of students who participated over the number of eligible testers. For example, in 2021, our district participation rate for grades three through eight in math was 18.8%, with 520 students testing of a possible 2,767 students. On the right side of the top table, you will see our participation rates for literacy. Please note that literacy is split between English Language Arts, or ELA, and Colorado Spanish Language Arts, or CSLA. CSLA is only available in grades three and four. This will read like the math side with participation percentage first, followed by the number of students who participated in the assessment over the number of eligible students. The table on the bottom of your screen shows our district science rates. In this table, as well as in the table above, you will see that the denominator or number of eligible testers is lower than in previous years. This is because of the change in required assessments, as mentioned on the previous slide, which is shown again on the bottom right box of the screen. This next slide and tables read just like the previous slide, but here we are looking at the participation rates only for elementary schools, grades three through five. I will pause for a moment and give you time to read the slide. This next slide shows participation rates for middle school students. You will notice that Spanish Language Arts, or CSLA, is no longer shown, and this is again because it's only available in grades three and four. I will pause for a moment and give you time to read the slide. This next slide shows participation rates for high school. The only change in 2021 because of COVID for high school students was the pause in administering the CMAS science assessment in 11th grade. The PSAT was required in grades nine and 10, and the SAT was required in grade 11. These assessments include both math and English Language Arts. I will pause for a moment and give you time to read the slide. And as a reminder, please write any questions you may have so we can address them at a later time. Next, you will see district participation rates. Or district participation for WEDA access for ELLs, which is often referred to as ACCESS. ACCESS is the English Language Proficiency Assessment all K through 12 English Language learners take, per federal requirement. Because English Language learners are the only students who take this assessment, the state does not provide us participation rates. This chart shows the number of students who took the assessment each year. The first column is the year of the assessment, followed by the number of students who completed the assessment by each level. And as indicated earlier, you will see lower participation in 2021 due to COVID. Next, I'm going to share 2021 CMAS, PSAT, and SAT achievement data. I will show, share growth later in this presentation. To begin, we want to share that the performance cut scores you will see throughout this presentation come from the school performance frameworks, which are provided by the Colorado Department of Education's Accountability Department. The image on the screen shows a snippet of the cut scores and levels you will see throughout these graphs, and you have the full page, as Sheila mentioned, included in your packet behind the presentation. This chart shows average scale score over three years in English Language Arts for grades three and five. We have split the charts into Adam City Middle and Kearney feeder schools for ease of reading. This graph is for the three schools that feed into Adam City Middle School. On the Y-axis, you will see scaled score ranging from a 650 to 850. On the X-axis, you will see the year. Please note 2020 is not included as there were no state assessments in the spring of 2020 because of COVID. On the top of the chart, you will see that the columns are divided into state, district, and each feeder school. And the bars represent the average scale score for each school that year. The number on the bar is the number of students included in the average score. For example, when looking at the district column, in 2018, the average scale score for third grade and fifth graders was 718.5 for 1,075 students. In 2019, the average scale score increased to 722.5 with 979 students. In this past spring, our district's average scale score for third and fifth grade was 711.5 with 470 students testing. The dotted lines going horizontally across the chart are cut scores for each rating level, as indicated on the previous slide. The lowest line, which is dotted yellow, is labeled 722.3 on the right side of the graph. This is the cut score for the school to get an approaching rating through the Colorado Department of Education's Accountability System. Anything below the yellow line is does-not-meets rating. Moving up, the next line is a green dotted line labeled 739.5. This is the cut score to earn a meets rating. Continuing up is a blue dotted line labeled 755.9. This is the cut score for a school or district to earn an exceeds expectations rating. On the following slides, you will see similar charts. However, the cut scores for the accountability ratings will change based on the level and content shown. I also want to point out that these are the cut scores for school ratings and not for individual student ratings. You will notice on this chart, and a few that follow, there will not be a bar, and instead you will see insufficient data, N is less than 16. This is because if there are less than 16 students who tested at any level, the state will not provide achievement data. This chart shows average scale score over three years for third and fifth English Language Arts for Kearney feeder schools. I will give you a moment to read the graph. This next graph shows the average scale score over three years for fourth grade math at the Adam City Middle School feeder schools. COVID has impacted student achievement. However, in alignment with state and national trends, our data shows that math was especially impacted. I will give you a moment to read the graph. This graph shows the average scale score over three years for fourth grade math at the Kearney feeder schools. I will give you a moment to read the graph. This next graph shows the average scale score over three years for seventh grade Language Arts. The next graph shows the average scale score over three years for sixth and eighth grade math. over three years for sixth and eighth grade math. The next graph shows the average scale score over three years for the PSAT IX in evidence-based reading and writing. There are no scores for Lester Arnold as they do not typically serve ninth grade students. At the high school level, we see less of the impact of COVID on student achievement scores. However, please keep in mind our participation rates. I will give you a moment to read the slide. This next graph shows the average scale score over three years for the PSAT IX in math. Next, we see the average scale score over three years for the PSAT X in evidence-based reading and writing. Next, we see the average scale score over three years for the PSAT X in math. I will give you a moment to read the slide. This next graph shows the average scale score over three years for the SAT in grade 11 for evidence-based reading and writing. I would like to highlight that while our participation rates are lower, our average scale score at the district level and at Adam City High School increased last year, and Lester Arnold decreased minimally. This graph shows the average scale score over three years for the SAT in grade 11 for math. Please notice that at the district level in both high schools, we saw an increase in SAT math scores for 11th grade students. Participation rates at ACHS are much lower, so it's hard to really do a comparison. But at Lester Arnold, the participation number is very similar to previous years, so the increase in 11th grade math scores is worth recognizing. Now, we will look at 2021 growth data. In 2021, growth data is available for the grade levels as shown on the slide. This is less than in a typical year because of reduced testing, and there was no CMAS, PSAT, or SAT testing in 2020. The state did not calculate growth for the PSAT and SAT this year. Now, we will visit some of the terms we will see in the upcoming slides. So median growth percentile, or MGP, is how the Colorado Department of Education reports growth as part of the state's accountability system. Median growth percentile is calculated by ranking students from lowest to highest, and then identifying the middle. This year, the Colorado Department of Education Accountability Department provided schools and districts with two different growth measures: cohort reference growth and baseline reference growth. Cohort reference growth is how the state calculates growth in a typical school year. Every year, the state resets to 50, and students are ranked above and below this median. This year, they provided a new growth measure, the baseline reference growth. This did not reset the state median to 50, and instead compares the students' progress in 2021 against previous year's expectations in order to see the impact of COVID on student learning. This graph shows the median growth percentile for elementary schools in fifth grade English Language Arts. The graph on the top shows the cohort growth measure, or that in a typical year where the state resets the median to 50. The graph below shows the baseline growth measure in order to demonstrate the impact of COVID on student learning. The greater the difference between the two charts, the greater the impact of COVID can be attributed to scores. For example, when looking at the first bar for the state, in a typical year, the state median is 50. Using the baseline measure, the state median is 46. This shows that as a state, fifth graders in English Language Arts grew on average four points less than they would in a typical year. The reference lines on the graph are the growth cut scores set by the Colorado Department of Education on the last page of your packet. The lowest line, which is dotted yellow and labeled 35, shows the cut score for the approaching rating on the school performance frameworks. Looking at the chart, DuPont's fifth graders would have earned an approaching rating. Moving up, the green dotted line references the 50th percentile, which is a meets rating on the accountability framework. The blue dotted line above that shows the cut score to earn an exceeds expectations rating. Again, the numbers on each bar represents the number of students included in that growth calculation. Some schools had less than 20 students take the assessment at this level, as shown by the insufficient data and is less than 20 indicator above the school name. If there's less than student, less than 20 students with a growth score, the state will not report that data. This next graph shows the median growth percentile for fifth grade English Language Arts over three years. Again, we have separated the feeder schools for readability. The left side of the graph, or Y-axis, shows the growth percentile range. The chart is separated into columns by school and is labeled by year on the bottom. As shown before, the cut scores for the state accountability ratings of approaching, meets, and exceeds are marked in order to compare the median growth percentiles for each school by year to these ratings. For 2021, the growth percentile shown is the baseline growth measure, as opposed to the cohort, as this is the data point the Colorado Department of Education is using to report state growth this year. This next graph shows the median growth percentile for fifth grade ELA at Kearney feeder schools. This graph shows both cohort and baseline growth percentile for seventh grade English Language Arts. I will give you a moment to read the graph. This next graph shows the median growth percentile for seventh grade English Language Arts, ELA, over three years. This graph compares cohort and baseline growth percentile for sixth grade math. And this graph shows the median growth percentile for sixth grade math over three years. This next graph shows both cohort and baseline growth percentile for eighth grade math. And again, this graph shows the median growth percentile for eighth grade math over three years. Now, we will see how Adams 14 achievement data compares to neighboring districts of a similar size. Sorry, neighboring districts and districts of a similar size. This graph shows the average scale score for third and fifth grade English Language Arts compared to other districts. On the Y-axis, we have scaled score ranging from 650 to 850. On the X-axis, we have the name of the district. Each bar shows the average scale score for that district, and the graph has been sorted with the highest average scale score being on the left and the lowest being to the right. The cut scores for schools and districts to earn the approaching, meets, and exceeds ratings for state accountability are marked for reference. This next graph shows average scale score comparison for fourth grade math. This next graph shows the average scale score comparison for seventh grade English Language Arts. Next, we see average scale score comparison for sixth and eighth grade math. This next graph shows the average scale score comparison for the PSAT evidence-based reading and writing for ninth and 10th grade. Next, we see the average scale score comparison for the PSAT math in grades nine and 10. This next graph shows the average scale score comparison for the SAT evidence-based reading and writing, grade 11. This next graph shows the average scale score comparison for the SAT math, grade 11. All of the cut scores on this chart have come from the Colorado Department of Education's Accountability website. Next, I will show you our 2021 WEDA Access data. As a reminder, WEDA Access is the English Language Proficiency Assessment for English Language learners in grades kindergarten through 12. This assessment is administered in January and February each school year. This first graph shows the four-year trends for number and percent of students who had scores that could be used as a data point to support redesignating their English Language proficiency status to English proficient. The Y-axis is the number of students, and the X-axis organizes the chart into years. At the top of the chart, each column is organized by group grade levels. The state reports data in this way as this is how the assessments are given. There is one assessment for kinder, one for first, second and third is the same assessment, and fourth and fifth have the same assessment. For example, students in grades two and three take the same assessment, and in 2018, 127 students, or 22% of English learners, had a score that was eligible for redesignation. These numbers remain the same, or remain similar, in 2019 and 2020, and in 2021, 28 students, or 11%, had scores eligible for redesignation. Because the test is given in January and February, we had typical participation in the 2020 school year. However, in 2021, we had lower participation because of COVID. I also want to point out that seeing low redesignation rates at the younger grade levels is typical. As per CDE, students should take at most six years to be redesigned. This next graph shows the number of students with scores eligible for redesignation at the secondary level. The first half with the blue bars is middle school, and the second half with the green bars is high school. And I will give you a moment to read this graph. Now, we are looking at access growth. Like CMAS, access growth is calculated by median growth percentile. Also like CMAS, this year, we were provided with two growth measures: the cohort, or traditional approach, and the baseline to see impact of COVID. On this slide, you will see the cohort growth on top, followed by baseline growth measure below. This slide is for Adam City Middle School feeder schools. This year, the state provided growth data by each grade level to see the impact at each level. In a typical year, these are grouped. The Y-axis shows the growth percentile, and the X-axis shows each grade level. The number on each bar is the number of students included in the growth rating. And the cut scores for accountability ratings are also shown and labeled by the dotted lines on the graph. I would like to highlight that DuPont's fourth grade had significant growth in access this past year. Because the growth scores were reported in a different format this year than in a typical year, we're unable to show three- to four-year trends in the same way we did earlier in the presentation for CMAS, SAT, and PSAT without slightly skewing the data. This next chart shows access median growth percentile for Kearney feeder schools. And as a reminder, the numbers on the bottom are the grade level. And ever there is a student size of less than 20, we will not receive growth scores from the state. This next chart shows access median growth percentile for middle schools. This next chart shows access median growth percentile for high schools. Next, I will show you our beginning of year, or BOY, data for the current school year. STAR Math and Reading are local district assessments that we use in the interim of state assessments. These assessments are given three times a year in both math and reading to students in grades three through 11 and 12 at Lester Arnold. Immediately after a student takes the STAR assessment, their data is available. There is a correlation between a student's STAR score and their state performance, state assessment performance. When looking at STAR data, we look at the state benchmark category predictor to see where a student is likely to score on CMAS or the PSAT and SAT based on their STAR score. The key on the bottom of the screen shows these five state benchmark categories. You will see these colors and levels You will see these colors and levels on the following slides. This graph shows the number and percent of students in each of the state benchmark levels for STAR reading at the beginning of the year at the district level. On top, you will see the year the bar is displaying data for. The bottom shows that this is beginning-of-year, or BOY, test window for each year. The first bar is our district's distribution at the beginning of year in the eighteen-nineteen school year. Next is the nineteen-twenty school year, followed by twenty-twenty-one and the current school year. For example, in the current school year, one thousand eight hundred sixty students, or forty-eight percent, scored in the red does-not-meets category. Nine hundred thirty-six, or twenty-four point one-five percent, of the students scored in the yellow partially-meets-expectations category. Six hundred fifty-three, or sixteen point eight-five percent, of students scored in the approaching expectations category. Three hundred ninety-seven, or ten point nine-five percent, of the students scored in the meets-expectations category. And twenty-nine students, or zero point seven-five, scored in the exceeds-expectations category. As mentioned previously, this graph shows where our students are expected to perform on CMAS based on their beginning-of-year STAR scores. Students will take STAR again at the middle of year in December, and again in April and May to measure growth for the year. This graph shows the number and percent of students in each of the state benchmark levels for STAR Math at the beginning of the year for the district level. This next graph shows the number and percent of students in each of the state benchmark levels in reading at the beginning of year over four years for Adams City Middle feeder schools. And as a reminder, we use this as an indicator for how students are expected to perform on our state assessments. This graph shows the number and percent of students in each of the state benchmark levels in reading at the beginning of the year for Kearney feeder schools. This next graph shows the number and percent of students in each category for math for ACMS feeder schools. As a reminder, this is beginning-of-the-year comparison. Our outcome and goal is to have a decrease in reds and an increase in greens by the end of the year, middle and then end of the year. This next graph shows the number and percent of students in each category for math at the beginning of the year for Kearney feeder schools. This graph shows the number and percent of students in each of the state benchmark levels in math at the beginning, oh, sorry. In reading at the beginning of the year over four years at middle schools. As a reminder, there are five benchmark categories. Dark green being the exceeds-expectations, which is lightly displayed on the data. We do not have many students in that category, or in some at all, to see that there's that fifth level. This next graph shows the number and percent of students in each category, in each of the five state benchmark categories for math at the beginning of the year over five years at middle school. Next, we see the number and percent of students in each state benchmark predictive category in reading for four years at the high schools. Next, number and percent of students in each of the state benchmark levels in math at the beginning of the year at the, for four years at the high schools. Students in grades K through five also take the Acadiants, or formerly DIBLs, assessment three times per year as part of the Colorado Read Act. Because we are still in the Acadiants window, we will provide this early literacy assessment data at a later date. Students in kinder through second grade take the Universal Screener for Number Sense twice a year to measure math learning and to inform instruction. The Number Sense screener window closes this week, so we will also provide this late, data to you at a later date. This concludes our presentation. At this time, I would like to turn it back to Dr. Luria for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gennaro. Thank you, Sheila and the team. This was a lot of information, so we're going to allow time for you to process and look at your notes and ask any questions.
Thank you. It has to deal with all the data points and the numbers, and I know at one point we had asked about the number of students versus percentages so that we could compare. And I think what would be helpful, and I started thinking about this, I don't know how to phrase this except for the fact that I see us having three categories of students. We have monolingual English, monolingual Spanish, and bilingual. So our bilingual group is the one that I think somehow is falling in between this, these numbers. I don't see how that data could be captured, and I know that the state does this, that they capture data in that sense, but I think we, as a district, should be providing that information so that we could show that our bilingual population, they test differently, and it's different. So I don't know if, if they did one, and I've said this before, if they did one in English or Spanish, or they had the opportunity to do it in both, what would that look like for them? Because I think that this, you know, and there's even one chart here that doesn't have a percentage of, it has the numbers, the one that only has the numbers. I see how, I don't know, I just think something's missing, and I just want to put it out there, because you guys are the experts. You know what you're doing. I'm just making this assumption that, as a bilingual person myself, it's different. It is a different scenario than if I was monolingual Spanish or monolingual English. Anyways, I just wanted to put that out there, but I'll look at, I'll look for that one, and I'll let you know which one it was that I'm referring to that has all the numbers, but it doesn't have, like, how many of the, how many of the English learners there are. And even on, on the whole data, on all the numbers, they're not broken down that way. They're just broken down by number of students, but it doesn't really tell us which groups, I don't know. I just wanted to put that out there.
I agree. I actually was looking up. This, not only was it very concerning, but I'm curious as to how this is going to affect our, our UIP, our performance plans. I don't remember, I should remember, but it's been a day. Are they, is CDE counting the 2021 data into, they're not, into the plans? Okay. And then my last question, I'll test the baton. For, when we're looking at the participation rates, and this might be tied to the opt-outs, are we comparing apples to oranges? I mean, I'm curious as to, you know, did we have the opt-outs? Did people just not participate? It's just, it was such a large decrease, but yet the, the static number, the, the number of students did not change too much. In some cases, it did, but that would be helpful to have that information.
Kits that were tested, out of how many is what I was referring to?
Thank you for the question. So this, the reason the denominator and participation rate is not included in that is because the state does not provide us that number, because a student can be kind of re-designated in and out during that window. So CMAS is a smaller window, so it's at the beginning of the window. Those are your students that you're required to test. However, because access last year was actually about seven weeks, students were in and out, so we couldn't have an official window, or number of students at that time. I can pull, if you would like, the number of English learners we had at the close of the window, if you would like to see those percentages. But the state does not include access for accountability purposes in the participation rate, so they don't provide that to us. And then Board Member Lovato, to address your, about the participation, looking at science, for example. In 2018, the ninety-eight point three percent was of the, oh, sorry, I'm going to look at the district grade. The eighty-nine point three percent was the one thousand three hundred sixty-three students we had test. There was one thousand five hundred twenty-seven students eligible to test, and science is in grades five, eight, and eleven, which is why those percentages are there. In 2021, the denominator is four ninety-nine, because I just included eighth grade at that point for who it was required for. And of the eighth graders, we had ninety-seven test, so that was nineteen point four percent of the eighth grade population. I didn't include five or eleven because it wasn't even offered to them as an option. And yes, this does include, of the eligible testers, this includes opt-outs. It includes students who are not eligible to test. For example, English learners, or not English learners, but newcomers who are in their first year in the United States, who are not English speakers. If they're in third and fourth grade and they're Spanish-speaking, they can take CSLA, they're Colorado Spanish Language Arts. But if we have a fourth grader come in who's in their first year in the US and they speak Arabic, we don't have an assessment for them, so they're automatically exempt from testing. So they would be included in this as well. And then additionally, because of COVID this year, the state said any families who were online and for safety measures didn't feel comfortable coming in, could, and did not decide or opt-in to test, were by default an opt-out. So that, that's another reason we see lower participation. So it's our online COVID reasons, our opt-out students, and our exempt students.
Thank you, Ms. Gennaro. I also want to add, we do have a presentation per, the board's request solely on bilingual and dual-language programs. We will be including data that is scheduled to come up in October. So we will be including this data. And, and then a comparison of how our bilingual students do versus monolingual students, whether they were tested in English or in Spanish, monolingual students. And as far as breaking down for our special ed students, we could include that in our presentation, if that is what you would like to see in October. We can include just a little section in there for our special ed students, our five oh four students by, by, by grade level and by school. If that is something that pleases the board.
They're all grouped in here already, right?
They are grouped in here. They were not disaggregated by, by student groups, but we can certainly add that piece. Ms. Gennaro has.
I do want to add that for a lot of our disaggregated groups, our N size is less than sixteen or twenty, so we don't have scores for a lot of them, but the ones we do, I'm happy to provide.
And I would say that might be especially true for last year, because our numbers were so small. And that's why you, you would see in many of the columns, data is not available because it's less than the number that we can report. But we can include that in our October bilingual and dual presentation, if that is something that you would like to see there.
Superintendent Luria, if I may add to that, we can also include that in our Friday updates, so we can pull the numbers for the N sizes, in addition to putting it in our upcoming presentation for you as well.
Yeah, Mike? There you go. My question was about the opt-outs and, and how is CDE going to look at that? I mean, that's, we have a lot of opt-outs by either them opting out or by them not feeling comfortable coming into the school building. So I guess they probably don't care.
So we do have opt-out rates for the past three years, we do have opt-out rates for the past three years by school, and I'd be happy to provide those in the Friday updates.
May I ask, do you guys disaggregate this information? And if so, have you identified areas that you feel could use additional resources? Or you have ideas to kind of target to increase those scores?
I'm going to have Ms. Gennaro start off, and then I'm going to talk to you about the process that we're following, because there's some guidelines from CDE that they cautioned us about.
Yes, so I do want to caution that CDE has stated if our participation percentages are less than seventy-five, to use caution when using the data, and to see if it is really representative of our students and populations. And again, if it's less than seventy-five, they express caution. So we are looking more at our local assessment measures for those purposes.
I would add, Board Member Lovato, that through our process, because our, our data window's just closed in there, that's the next phase that we're going through, both as a district and at the school level, is to be able to look at our local data sets. Our state data sets will also be considered, but because our participation rate was lower than the seventy-five percent, we are going to use caution as we look at those and really look at a body of evidence to be able to look at resource allocation needs based off of schools. And then support, what are those areas that we need to continue to do that the data sets were doing well? And then what are those areas that we need to revisit? Or continue to add more time if we feel like our measures are showing some indication of progress, but we're going to place a bigger emphasis on our local data sets.
I like that, yeah. Thank you.
So, Madam President, members of the board, since we are having a part two for the bilingual data presentation, we're going to be sharing the updates with you in a Friday update, so that you can look at the data ahead of time as well. And if there's any other question that is, you know, coming after this, after you sleep on it and think about it, you know, you can send us, send me the questions, and then we'll, we'll include those in the presentation for October. We try to include the specificity of number of students comparison, so it's not a data set that is, that has no context. Of course, considering that we have COVID, the numbers are very different as compared to last year, but including but including two and three years prior to the COVID year, it presents a trend that will be useful for you to look at and ask questions, and then also use this as information to allocate funds as a district and division. So we will bring another data set, we'll include the other pieces. And unless there's any other question, we can continue to our next item.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Superintendent Luria. So good evening again. Our next presentation is going to review the Unified Improvement Plan Process, or what we refer to as our UIP. This is a process that both our districts and schools have followed as outlined by the Colorado Department of Education. In your folder titled Unified Improvement Plan, you'll see our presentation for tonight. It's also up on the screen, followed by our UIP one-pagers in the order that our schools will be presenting. We're going to start with Kearney Middle School, followed by Adam City Middle School, and ending with Lester Arnold High School. On October 8th, you will receive each school's complete UIP in a PDF for your review. And then again, we'll have the board take action on all schools' unified improvement plans on our board meeting scheduled for October 12th. We would like to request that you hold your questions to the end of our presentation. Now, at this time, I'd like to turn our presentation over to our Director of Federal Programs, Ms. Stephanie Reddick.
Just in time. That was perfect. Good evening. Can you hear me? How about now? Okay. Good evening, Madam President Lewis, and distinguished board members, Superintendent Luria, and our viewing audience. My name is Stephanie Reddick, and I serve as the Director of Federal Programming. I'm here tonight to provide you with an update regarding our Unified Improvement Plan, or what we like to call the UIP process. So I'd like to begin that the Unified Improvement Plan is intended to provide districts and schools with a consistent format to capture improvement planning efforts that streamline state and federal planning requirements with the outcome to increase student learning. On the screen, you will see our federal and state accountability requirements. These requirements are to ensure that schools and districts meet state, federal, and program accountability. Based on the Colorado Achievement Plan for Kids, the primary purpose of improvement planning is to align efforts to ensure all students exit the K-12 education system ready for post-secondary education in order to be successful in the workforce, earning a living wage immediately upon graduation. Colorado schools and districts can improve student learning and system effectiveness by engaging in a cycle of continuous improvement to manage their performance. To support this, the Education Accountability Act of 2009 requires each Colorado district and school to create an annual improvement plan. So the intent is that schools and districts create a single plan that has true meaning for stakeholders, ultimately reducing the total number of separate plans required. The Unified Improvement Plan template has been designed by Colorado Department of Education to meet state, federal, and program accountability requirements. Within the statutory request, it is expected that there are meetings, at least quarterly, to discuss whether school leadership, personnel, and infrastructure are advancing or impeding implementation of the school's performance improvement, priority improvement, or turnaround plan, whichever is applicable, and other progress pertinent to the school's accreditation contract. The diagram on your screen illustrates the theory of action behind the State of Colorado's approach to improvement planning. By engaging in a continuous improvement cycle to manage performance, districts and schools will improve their effectiveness and the outcomes for students. In the center of the diagram, you will see the word focus, which gives us our highest priorities to increase student outcomes. Around the word focus on your screen, you will see evaluation, or evaluate, plan, and implement. They are built in with arrows as to show the cyclical meaning. It is ongoing throughout the year. For tonight's purpose, we will be using the following terms: evaluate performance, by gathering, analyzing, and interpreting data about performance; plan, improvement strategies based on performance data; root cause analysis, and evidence-based strategies; and finally, implement, which we will talk about some planned improvement strategies. So on this slide, this is the English slide. On the next slide is the Spanish slide. We couldn't fit it all on one. We tried. On your screen, you will see a graph from the Colorado Department of Education that shows visually the process our district and schools follow as they prepare their Unified Improvement Plan. The process begins by preparing to plan for the drafting of the UIP that includes reviewing current local and state performance data. This can include, but is not limited to, ACADiENTS, or DIBbles, STAR, CMAS, PSAT-SAT, attendance, and dropout, just to name a few. This provides the school teams with data to begin to target-set and identify the challenges that need to be addressed. We then move to the targeting, target-setting column of the process, which is in the middle, in the green section on your screen. Priority challenges are selected from the analysis of current performance and trends. They are summary statements of the school performance issues that the school or district has decided to focus on for the remainder of the plan. We, finally, we move into the action planning column. On the screen, you will see a column all the way to the right side. Action planning ensures we are identifying the root causes. Root causes are the underlying barriers within the school or district system that may be driving each of the priority performance challenges. Challenges and root causes are discussed to determine what major strategies will be focused on throughout the school for student achievement. Based on our major improvement strategy, schools develop action steps that are over the course of the whole year. So finally, we must identify what our benchmarks and interim measures are going, are going to be, so we get to progress monitor. The progress monitoring section is located at the bottom of the graph in yellow and links back to our data analysis section. Progress monitoring happens, again, at least quarterly to discuss action steps, benchmarks, and interim measures. Schools engage in conversations with principals, stakeholders, and it's all around student achievement, and it's to engage in that cyclical process. So let's talk about our timeline. Over the next two slides, we will be discussing the timeline for the 2122 school year. During fall of 2021, district staff will be providing schools with feedback and next steps on their Unified Improvement Plan using the Quality Criteria Rubric School Level, which is from the Colorado Department of Education. And it is found in your folders. The state submission is October 15th, 2021. As we move into winter and spring, school teams progress monitor and have at least quarterly meetings to discuss action steps, benchmarks, and interim measures. We ensure that we are engaging in conversations with all stakeholders around student achievement. Then, starting in 2022, teams will begin the Unified Improvement Plan Process for drafting their 2223 Unified Improvement Plan with our community stakeholders. So I want to thank you for your time tonight. It was a pleasure to present the Unified Improvement Plan Process. I would like to bring it back to Sheila. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reddick. So at this time, we would like to turn it over to our schools, who are going to share out their Unified Improvement Plan. In your folder, you're going to see their one page, which is just a synopsis or a summary of their entire Unified Improvement Plan document. Again, on Friday, during our updates, we will provide you with the entire PDF document for each of the schools for that on October 8th, so that you can have them for your reference to take action on. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Kearney Middle School, specifically Principal Seelak.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Excellent. Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent Luria, and distinguished members of the board. My name is Tom Seelak. I'm the principal at Kearney Middle School. And this is Nathan Cabrera, the assistant principal at Kearney Middle School.
Good evening.
I'd like to just start by kind of elaborating on our process of how we constructed and created and decided upon our UIP. The UIP's work began during the second semester of last year. Our committee, which consisted of the format of a PDSA, which is Plan, Do, Study, Act. To provide a little bit of a historical context, Kearney Middle School has typically shown incredible ability to capitalize on students' growth and movement, so taking them from where they're starting and getting them closer and growing them. We continue to structure student talk and student feedback. The first piece to high-quality Tier One instruction is that delivery of instruction. And the first, and that comes with aligned to the curricular resources and the curriculum that we have in our district. We want to push our students to engage in higher-level thinking while also giving them time to have that productive struggle where they can, they can spar with the content. We also implemented quite a bit of language support for our students, and that includes having consistent support across all content areas in our building. Structured student talk, and as you saw in some of the data there, with the school performance framework, we realized through the analysis of the blueprints that about just under 40% of the overall score was really dedicated.
This is allowed for that curriculum alignment and making sure that we have the rigor and some of those pieces that Principal Seelak already spoke to. It also gives us time to think about how effective is our instruction? So they go through a data dialogue process each week, and where they say, okay, we gave this common formative assessment. What did our, how did our students do? What were some of the gaps that were seen in our instruction, and how are we, how are we going to address those gaps?
The third action is around instructional leadership data review. And here, we are looking at trends that we are seeing in classrooms through observations. And these observations take place from administration, district support, our instructional coaches, as well as peer observations as well. And so identifying those trends so that we can then align our PD around what we are seeing, as well as provide specific support for individualized teachers so that they can make the biggest impact on the students in their class. We also analyze discipline data, attendance data, and staff surveys, because obviously, discipline can impact instruction, as well as attendance, of course, which we need students to be in our classes so that they can be engaged in learning.
And then the last action connected to this major improvement strategy is around grade level, I'm sorry, yeah, grade level student analysis and supports. And we have two kind of structures that support that, which is our MTSS process, which stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. And our grade level teams identify students that might need some additional intervention, and they design that intervention and then collect data connected to it so that we are adapting instructional and behavioral support for students so that they can be successful in our classrooms. The other ones around actually are AVID program that we are just getting started at the middle school level. So we are building it across the district. This year, we are starting at the middle school level. We have two cohorts. And once again, this is connected to being able to get students to a high level of rigor as they think about college and career readiness, and some of the skills that can kind of support them as they start that journey.
In terms of the data that we study, with the observational data, we look at that with our instructional leadership team on a weekly basis. We look for, as I mentioned, we look for those trends, and then try and differentiate our support for our teachers to make sure that we can help develop their practice. We engage our teachers in coaching cycles, which includes planning with the staff, planning with the teachers, observing them, and then providing them that bite-sized feedback that then guides that next time that we're in their classroom and observing and planning with them. This provides us the opportunity to support our staff so that they can best support our students and support that growth and achievement. We have been implementing a practice of using low inference notes, which is really based in data, so that teacher really gets us like a clear picture into what is happening in their classroom, because as they're teaching, there's a lot going on, and we just want to ground it in data so that they are aware of exactly what's happening, because then that guides that action step creation as we create that together.
And I think that really kind of covers our first major improvement strategy around high-quality Tier One instruction. Our second major improvement strategy is more around continuous improvement through shared accountability. And so in order to do that, it's really about how are we engaging the different stakeholders within our building to be able to support students as they're going through their learning? So we have, once again, a couple of specific action steps connected to that major improvement strategy. The first one's around all staff instructional commitments. And so we talked about some of the different things that we gave some feedback, or some PD around at the start of the year. But we're looking at things like student goal setting, peer observations, integrated language supports. So we're looking at how are we supporting our language learners? This year, we have kind of an aligned language function outline, so that our staffs are focusing on a specific language function for a chunk of time across all content, so that students aren't just seeing it in an ELD class, but they're seeing it in all their contents. And all students are getting that support without, how do we compare and contrast? How do we explain and reason? How do we create an argument to kind of support students as they're going through their learning?
We also want to make use, and we have a tremendous amount of leaders in our building, so through our shared decision-making committee, we bring data and look at data there with our department chairs, as well as grade level leaders, to be able to look at STAR data, to look at the observational data, to be able to guide what is happening in our classroom so that we have many voices in our room to guide those next steps and clarity around those. With the STAR, we look at that after each assessment, and we do have students set goals around STAR prior to taking the assessment, and then follow up with them to see if they were able to reach their goal, and then thinking ahead to the next benchmark time there. We also have identified ambassadors in our building, where each teacher has identified five ambassadors. And we use that to guide what is happening and how we plan for our students and differentiate for our students, because if we can reach all of our ambassadors, we're going to have a much bigger impact on all of our students as well.
And then the last action step is around kind of that student support and engagement. And so we know that certainly looking at where our students have come from in terms of coming through a pandemic and starting this year off in some different spaces, we wanted to make sure that we had some supports built into our plan to be able to help them navigate this year. And so we have some things really around restorative justice and trauma-oriented practices to kind of think about the behavioral side and how we're supporting students as they are learning, because we know that learning can only take place if, if they feel like they're in a space where they can be safe and things like that. So that's kind of the key actions to our second major improvement strategy. So we'll kind of talk about some of the measurements that we are doing in connection to that.
So in terms of the benchmarks that we are looking at, this includes local and common assessment data, which we talked about STAR already. But we also have weekly common formative assessments that we analyze in our weekly data team meetings across both middle schools in collaboration with Adam City Middle School. We also have performance tasks that come at the end of each unit, which are use of the curricular resources, and those assessments come directly from our curriculums. And then we're using that to guide and determine the effectiveness of our best first instruction.
Do you want to talk about attendance and behavior? Yes. And in terms of the student support and engagement, we are also looking at the behavioral data, attendance data as well, and setting goals connected to that. So, for example, looking at the percentage of students with our attendance data. We've met on a monthly basis, identified, okay, here's where our percentage is at. We want, by next month, this is where we want our percentage to be, with having at least a minimum of a 2% increase. So for example, this year, we started off at 80%, and we are at currently about 80, we're at 89%. So trying to continue to build upon that as we are trying to engage our families and our students.
And then, lastly, just speaking of engagement with families, we do send out our newsletter and include instructional highlights and focuses. and include instructional highlights and focuses for our, FOCI, for our families to speak to their students about. And so that we also share information around our UIP at our PTO and our school accountability committee. And then, as I said, with the STAR assessment, there is a STAR parent report as well that we are sending home with each of our students just to try to engage and help our families partner with us so that we can best support their students. And at this point, those, that is really our presentation around our Unified Improvement Plan. Would love to open it up to any questions you may have.
Well, I just have, I just have a question on the data, but how often do you do the data on the children so the parents and the staff are aware where they're functioning at? So if the students need more help, that you can assist the parents in how to get that help?
Absolutely. So we administer the STAR assessment three times during the school year. We are looking to bring in a fourth one just as another additional benchmark to be able to update families there. But then our teachers send home progress reports on a bi-weekly basis, so twice a month approximately. And then in terms of just supporting families, we want, we offer after-school activities and tutoring as well to try and help our students engage.
Okay, I think I was looking for more like a timeline for both. Like, is it every three weeks so the parents can get a head start on if their child does need help? You know, they can get a little head start on it. So that's been my concern for a lot of years is, because I know when I was at Kearney, I wasn't, I was in another program, but I had to handle the summer school program, registration and that. And a lot of the parents that came in was questioning, why weren't they notified ahead of time? Because they would say, I just had a parent-teacher conference with them, and this was not brought to my attention. So that's my concern is making sure that parents have a heads up right away, not, like as a parent, I didn't want to know my kid was not in class at six o'clock at night. I needed to know at nine o'clock. So there are parents out there that do want a heads up on everything because granted, we are not equipped to help them, you know, so we need to make sure there's ways to get that. And I did see in social media the other day that there was parents asking, how can I get some tutors for my children? So it's a concern, and I couldn't answer, and I wasn't going to answer it because I didn't have it. So if you, both schools could answer that when it's.
Yeah, in terms of trying to make it so that parents are not surprised about the progress of their students, I mean, we have several different avenues that we've been trying to support our parents with. Obviously, we have, Infinite Campus has the app, so that that's something that they can check on a continual basis whenever they like. We are utilizing Tuesday folders in which we are sending home some progress reports. Our teachers are sending progress reports, as Mr. Seelick said, kind of on a, every, like every other week, you're sending home that piece. We also have Google Classrooms. All of our teachers are utilizing Google Classrooms, and we have asked them to pair it with kind of an email, like a parent report, that automatically goes to their email as well to, so if it goes right to them after a new assignment's kind of been put in there as long as the parents have given us their email address. And so we're trying to do several different approaches because we know some approaches work better for some families and other approaches work better for others. So our goal is just the same as yours. We don't want families to be surprised about where their kid is at, at parent-teacher conferences. We want them to be well aware, this is where my kid's at, I've gotten phone calls, I've gotten phone calls from the teacher, I've gotten, I've gotten reports sent home, I've gotten things that I can check in my email. So we're trying a variety of strategies just because we know people have different preferences about how they like to get the information.
Board Member Quintana, if I may add, one of the strategies that Kearney Middle School does in addition to the parent phone calls that our principals spoke briefly about is that they also use text messages to be able to inform parents, not around just when a child is falling behind or there's some concern, but also to indicate when students are performing well with it. And so every week, teachers are sending out text messages and emails to families to be able to indicate where they're at through that. So that's done weekly in addition to the items that Principal Seelick and Vice Principal Cabrera has spoke about.
And one thing we are excited to bring back as well is our academic awards assemblies at the end of each quarter, which also highlights student successes. And prior to the pandemic, it was really gaining steam, and we were having a great parent turnout to those as well because we reach out to those families directly as well to really partner with them and celebrate the student's success.
A lot of that work is done through our parent liaisons that are at both locations in there, and so a lot of that work is organized, that Principal Seelick was talking about, through our family liaisons.
With the IC and the Google classroom, do you have parent tutoring for that so that they know how to use those and things?
Absolutely. So at our back-to-school night, we provided opportunities for trainings and also designed parents up for the parent portal and also received just like a little bit tutorials. But then we are also working to post some videos to our social media as well just because we know not everybody was able to attend that evening. So that provides access for families just to be able to know how to navigate some of the online platforms.
And we also do that around parent-teacher conferences as well. I have another round of that training provided at the school as well for those who would prefer to be walked through that process.
And Madam President Lewis, in addition to what the school is doing at a district level, we do support all our liaisons with training in addition to our parents. That includes video tutorials, step-by-step process, one-on-one support that we provide through both our communications department under Dr. Lundin or through our student records office with Mr. Marcus.
So my question is around, once again, having been around for a long time, we won't even go how many years doing UIPs with as a parent. You talked about, you know, presenting this information to your parents. I'm just assuming that because of the pandemic, it was kind of hard to get parents' participation last year to do the UIP, correct? And so I think that this is something that could be brought up to DAC. And I guess my question is, where in all this process does DAC live? Because in your presentation, it was all about, I mean, I didn't see where exactly it was. And I just want to really put a plug in there that the whole idea of having DAC is that they help the schools as well and so that your representatives that are representing there can also help with these UIPs and so forth and your SAC. And then you talked about, sorry, you talked about the shared decision-making committee, and I was just curious if you had any parents from your SAC on that or from your DAC?
We have offered, although attendance hasn't always been, it's before school and sometimes we have some community members and staff members, but we are looking for just community members as well that aren't necessarily part of our district as well.
Okay, and just so you know, I know with the pandemic and what have you, I think the success rate has been a lot higher doing virtual for some of them. And I know that in the past, I've worked with some of the families and we've been able to provide them with a laptop and, you know, 101 on Zoom, and they've been able to do just fine participating that way. It seems to be something that I think we have forgotten that even though the kids, because the kids have the, they know what they're doing and sometimes they help.
Is that similar to best first? I'm just wondering about the alignment, if it's the same thing in a different word or, okay?
High-quality Tier One instruction and best first instruction are the same.
Awesome, thank you. My second thing, I've heard wonderful things from teachers, students, staff, that the collaboration between the two middle schools, so hats off to you guys. I'm one, okay, these are the goals, these are the objectives, this is how your student is doing. I had, I had a lot of great conversations with teachers over the summer, and I'm kind of going to ask all the schools this. I'm curious about your grading because from what I hear, I think the grading is still the typical, you know.
I know restorative justice works really well if it's, if it's done to its fidelity with training and a lot of support. So I'm just curious to find out, is that something new that you guys are starting out? Or is that something that you've been looking at? How is that going?
I mean, this is something that we have started looking at last year, and we're trying to continue to build. I mean, it started with some de-escalation training for all of our staff at the start of the year, this year. And that's, I mean, I would say that's kind of the top priority, but we are planning for this as we move forward for starting this year and going into next year.
And does that include the trauma-informed practices as well? Is that, you guys are still in the process of developing those?
We have gotten some initial training around that, but we are continuing to build our understanding and our toolbox around how to do that. So like I said, it started.
Thinking that, but at the same time, just knowing that if we can impact these five, we will have a much larger impact on our entire student population.
And just speaking to that, I mean, our ambassadors were selected because they were at varying levels of understanding, right? And the goal was being, okay, if we have these five ambassadors and we're thinking about them as we're having our data conversations and our planning conversations, we can actually connect a name to, rather than just like a data, it's not a data point, this is a person that we are talking about, okay? Tom didn't quite get it here, he's generally at this space. What can we do in our instruction to reach him? And if we're reaching him, we know we're reaching other students that are at the same level. So our students, as Principal Seelick said, we've identified them using through data, and we feel like they're good representatives of some different levels so that we can differentiate our instruction.
Madam President, members of the board, really, the ambassador's concept is something that many of the schools are implementing, actually, all of the schools are implementing. This was introduced this year based on experiences from the past, knowing that differentiation is the one area that will guarantee that we are moving the needle, the student's growth and achievement. So the idea with this is really not to miss usually, or very commonly in turnaround settings, we focus on the lowest performing school, students, or those who we want to see over this, you know, the minimum bar, but it's really looking at students in the classroom. You have many things happening, and it feels almost like you have to differentiate for thirty, twenty-five students that you have in your classroom. For a new teacher, that is very difficult. So this is a structure that is actually, it makes it doable for teachers to differentiate for smaller number of students, but are students who have been selected strategically and carefully by the administration, by the teacher, no surprises, and all the observations, PLCs, data conversations that the principals, administration, support staff is having with teachers is around how those students, how those students react to the instruction. So sometimes we also feel that a great lesson, you, we did phenomenal, but the students are not learning, so it doesn't really matter because at the end of the days, whether the students learned or not from a lesson. So we focus the attention on how the students are reacting to the instruction, how the students are able to talk about what they're learning. And if it's happening with a smaller number of students, what we have found is, you know, from previous experiences, that the teachers will vary, then will be able to jump to a different level of differentiation when they're not just thinking, when they plan about a few kids, but now a larger group of students. So it's a way to make it doable, not only for teachers, but also to administrators to follow up on students and like our principals mentioned, to put a name and a face to a number. So it's not about percentage of students, it's who are they? What are their names? What are their stories? So we can start identifying and connecting better with our students, with our communities, and really, really understanding what is it that they need. Because if Carla is one of the ambassadors and we're not connecting with Carla, the teacher, you know, cannot, you know, connect with the student, it's not about catching the teacher doing something wrong, it's about, okay, let's talk about what else can we do to connect with the student. And this helps teachers plan, start thinking differently when they are planning instruction that will also support with the first instruction, the first level of instruction, the Tier One instruction, which is basically the first time a teacher is introducing a concept to the student, that is what we want to improve. But that is based on great planning and collaboration, and it makes it doable when we reduce the number at first, especially, as I said, for new teachers.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn our presentation over to Principal Pearson and Vice Principal Lindberg.
Good evening. Can you hear me now? Is that better? Make it closer? Is that better? Okay, good.
We want everyone in the Facebook to be able to hear you.
Absolutely. That is not a problem. I'll even kiss this bad boy. Good evening, President Lewis, members of the board, Dr. Loria. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Martin Pearson. I am the principal of Adam City Middle School, and this is Jennifer Lindberg, and she is our assistant principal. And we've been asked to provide a brief overview of our Unified Improvement Plan. And so I thought what would be best is kind of talk about what our process has been. And honestly, Tom could have done the presentation for both of us because I think we're so in sync with one another. So effectively last year, one of the things that we wanted to do is we wanted to get buy-in from our teachers and also from our community and our classified staff. At that time, Jamie Ball had provided a system for us to work with in order to be able to do that. So we looked at our UIP from the previous year, and in looking at the UIP, what I did is I had my ILT, my Instructional Leadership Team, go through and pull out the pieces that still applied, and then also pull out the pieces that we know need to apply, but we've not effectively done a great job of implementing in terms of strategies. In addition to that, once we got past that process, then I was able to share that information also with PTO and with our SAC team. And these are not large bodies of people, please know that, but we were able to get some feedback to help kind of support the implementation of our plan. And so around that, one of the things that we were really working hard on is not completely changing what we'd done before. And we had a lot of successes last year, we feel, especially given the year that we dealt with. The idea that we were able to put together a PLC that was virtual, that included two different schools, was absolutely the best thing we could have ever done last year. And that worked for us on a lot of different levels, but at the same time, because we were dealing with this remote situation, it brought us closer together and it made sure that we were planning for the same type of instruction. And also, the struggle was real for our teachers. The teachers who were in remote last year, which in the beginning was all of them, and then eventually moving into those that were, they were the ones who decided that they were going to stay at home while we had in-person learning, bringing them into the fold was instrumental. And so not only were we able to do that effectively, but we didn't have to abandon our PLC process in order to get where we needed to go. So in looking at our strategies, we identified three strategies. And I'm going to review Strategy One with you, and then Ms. Lindberg will review Strategy Two, and then I'll go into Strategy Three and then our data measurements as well. So our first strategy is really about having a consistent instructional model. And basically, what that means is from the time a student walks into a classroom, there should be an instructional delivery that is consistent. Now, we do know that based on the curriculum and based on the content areas, that can shift a little bit, but for the most part, what we're really looking for is we're looking for a student to come into the class, they have an in, they have an activity that they immediately jump into, the teacher's able to review that activity, and then we do new learning, and it's really a lesson launch. It's not a lot of time for the teacher to kind of be front and center because we want to focus our time on allowing the kids to effectively struggle with the content like Tom had mentioned. So that looks like about fifteen minutes of direct instruction, and then at that point, we start really engaging more so in that gradual release model. So the I do is the teacher component, and then the we do, we work on it together, so the teacher and the students, and then the you do is an opportunity for the kids to demonstrate their learning. By the end of the lesson, what we're also hoping to see is not only that the students have been able to meet the objective that's been posted on the board, but also that we have some type of assessment, it's an exit ticket, something very quick, that allows us to see whether or not the kids met. us to see whether or not the kids met that target. And so, that really is that instructional delivery. When I came into the district several years back, one of the things that I noticed is we were kind of all over the place, and I knew that if we didn't get that piece figured out, that we weren't ever going to be able to move on to those next steps. And so, for us, that instructional model is huge. And so, we do stand student-friendly objectives, and they include the content, the function, and the product. Basically, what I say to teachers is, kids need to know exactly what it is that they're expected to learn by the end of that lesson, and you also need to have some type of tool to assess whether or not that learning has been achieved. So, we try to keep it extremely basic. And so, we also try very hard to make sure that if our students, for example, don't understand exactly what the objective is asking, that the teacher is unpacking that with the students. You know, because words like analyze or describe, we take for granted, but our kids don't necessarily understand that language. And my kids don't, this isn't an Adams fourteen thing, this is a thirteen-year-old thing. And so, we want them to unpack those, that language so that our kids can fully understand what they're expected to learn and do by the end of the lesson. In addition to that, we've implemented writing across all content areas, so that is something that we expect to see when we go into classrooms. We don't see it all the time, but that's not because it's not happening, it's just because of the time that we walk into the classroom. But what I've encouraged, and I spent a lot of time with teachers at the beginning of the year, talking about, because a lot of our teachers have fear around writing, especially if you're not a language arts teacher. I don't know how to teach writing, I don't know, and I appreciate all that. What the data and the research tells us is the exposure to writing, regardless of the format, or really, any type of procedural pieces that we had put in place or programming, is still a win, because writing is thinking. And what we know based on the blueprint information is that when we are looking at those particular areas, you know, based on the released items that kids are struggling with, it's about being able to develop their thinking on paper. And so, we've been pushing this, and pushing this, and pushing this, and we'll continue to do that, because that's also part of our climb towards more rigorous instruction. Another one was differentiation, and I believe that Dr. Loria had honestly spoke to this. Differentiation is, in my brain, it's easy, but I've also been doing this for twenty-five years, okay? For a lot of our teachers, especially our newest ones, they are constantly thinking about how do you meet this target, and this target, and this target, and this target, all at the same time? And so, what we're trying to teach our teachers to do is effectively set that bar high and work completely on building the scaffolds. And so, what is a scaffold? I mean, essentially, it's just an opportunity for our kids to be able to reach that level and meet that standard, and for some kids, they need different types of supports. And so, that's the direction that we're going in, and what I wanna, I think, highlight here is, none of this is perfect. Like, I've got teachers who are really good at this, and I've got teachers that need a lot of support with this. But we're constantly pushing it, because we know how important it is. And also, what we've noticed is when we start to look at our students, especially in our special populations, special, it is a great example, when I'm looking at Ds and Fs, I also have to look at whether or not the actual IEP has been implemented fully by the teacher, because we can't be failing kids if we're not meeting their needs, right? Because we're not giving them the tools. And so, that's a part of the differentiation component that I also ask my teachers to be very sensitive to. And if we're gonna fail a student for any reason, we need to know that we've done everything we possibly could to get them over the hump. And so, that's what differentiation is about. And then, I would say the last piece in terms of that instructional model is all around the student feedback. When you walk into a classroom, do you see teachers providing feedback to students on their learning and on their work that is immediately actionable? So, can this student make a move in a positive fashion towards meeting a standard based on the feedback the teacher is sharing with them? And so, we've worked on that as well, and Ms. Lindberg will go into that a little bit, and kind of how we had done our beginning-of-the-year professional development. As far as our teachers are concerned, every one of our teachers will go through a twelve-week coaching cycle this year, and we've been doing that now for two years. So, we have two instructional coaches, and what that means is they meet, they build goals together, and then it is twelve weeks of intense coaching and feedback. And so, there's that relationship that gets built between the teacher and the coach. I will say that once that twelve weeks is over, it's not like we just drop off and we stop. That also becomes a part of our role as an admin team, and we make sure that we're constantly providing that opportunity for feedback with those teachers. We do daily walkthroughs that are focused on instructional priorities, so my ad team walks the building every day, the only day we don't do it is Monday, and that's because we have an ad team meeting during that time, and we keep data, report on that data to teachers, and we're looking for a few things. We're looking for whether or not we've got our objectives posted, whether or not our kids are actually engaging in, at that time, because when we do it, the actual intervention courses that we offer during our first period of the day, and it's nothing more than us being able to get a bird's-eye view of what's happening throughout the building. And so, truly, we see our teachers a lot more utilizing this method than we've been able to do in the past. With that, we do our leadership team weekly walkthroughs, which our leadership team is myself and Ms. Lindberg, and we've got our support from Dr. Jimenez and from Kate, and then we also invite other members and our coach. And we're doing weekly walkthroughs, and those walkthroughs are completely focused on literacy and math. So, we're in either language arts classes, we're in math classrooms, we go through a protocol to kind of debrief what it is that we've observed, and so, the process we're in right now is we're working towards making sure that we have a clean process for how we provide that feedback to teachers, because we're doing it, but it's still a little messy. And then, the monitoring of student ambassadors, and that happens as part of the walkthroughs. All of our teachers chose five, and they come from differing levels, but the message we're trying to get to our teachers, because right now, if you don't know, they're a little overwhelmed, we're trying to get them to focus on those kids, and just as Tom had mentioned, what that means for us is if I'm having success with this child, who may have a lot of the same challenges that another child is, how am I not going to still spread, I'm sorry, spread the love to this other kid? Right? We need to make sure. So, that's really the purpose behind the ambassadors, and we like the idea, and our teachers are bought into it. So, I'm super excited about that. Then we do our instructional team meetings. I have an instructional leadership team that I meet with every two weeks, that includes all of my program heads, my department heads, my grade-level heads, and we have two components of that. We do a business meeting that's completely focused on the building and instructional initiatives within the building, and then the other one, we're doing a workshop on leadership, because we're trying to make sure that we're developing their capacity to eventually sit in this seat. So, that happens. Additionally, we do our PLC meetings, and those happen every week, and then we are constantly looking at that ninety-day plan and the UIP. And so, we do the ninety-day plan, because we're UVA, we're part of that, but now we're working really hard, and Stephanie's been instrumental in this, in getting us to bring those two documents together so that they both, I mean, effectively say the same thing. And so, we're not there yet, but we're getting really, really close, and I'm very proud of the work that I've been able to do, but also that my team has done and the support that we've been given. So, that's been a huge piece of the work that we're doing. You wanna go into strategy two?
Sure. Okay, so, strategy two at Adam City Middle School is ensuring that every student is exposed to or is challenged with rigorous content and rigorous tasks every day, and I mean, every content area, so from PE to art, music, ELD, science, ELA, so every academic class that they are in, they are challenged with, or they are challenged with rigorous content, and really proposed with doing the thinking and the learning in the classroom. So, there are two major components around that. The first one is around the professional development that we do. We've done a lot of PD around instructional strategies for rigorous learning. We want to make sure that we're minimizing teacher talk in the classroom, and that we should see seventy percent student talk, and student, both Principal Selig and Principal Pearson referred to the, kind of the struggle, that productive struggle that students need to learn, and so, we wanna see seventy percent of the time in the classroom, students engaged in that productive struggle. We are also focused on writing across the content areas, and Principal Pearson also referred to that as well. A lot of our, actually, all of our teachers have developed their student learning outcome goal, for their professional goal, around a writing objective, and so, we're expecting writing on a regular basis, again, in every content area, so you will see that in electives as well as core content classes, and teachers have been working really hard to really deepen their professional growth around those writing expectations in the classroom, and having a standardized rubric to grade students and actually track a lot of that growth. So, we're excited to see a lot of the outcomes around that as well. Depth of knowledge is kind of like the tasks that we're asking students to do. So, we don't want students to just sit, get information, and repeat what the teacher just told them, we want them to create, to synthesize, to really make a lot of the learning a part of their understanding, and to be able to deeply explain and process what we're asking them to do. And then, again, as I mentioned, we wanna see a lot of that structured student talk, which is tied into a lot of the things that we've been working at ACMS the past couple of years around, not only Kagan strategies, which are engagement strategies that have student work and student talk in an accountable format, but also that discourse or those debate and writing strategies. So, we're really looking at making students accountable for the thinking and the learning in the classroom, and setting that standard high across all content areas. And Mr. Pearson mentioned our observation and feedback cycles again. It's something that we work, we strive to do on a daily basis, and more in-depth on a weekly basis, between administration and coaches, observing student learning and providing feedback, not only for teacher-to-student feedback, but also coaching, administration-to-teacher, and then monitoring that, the planning and the implementation of that process through our observation cycle.
Actually, that's probably better, we need to keep it brief. All right, so, strategy three is super fast, right? So, this is all about data, right? One of the things that we are working extremely hard to do is actually make sense of the data and truly just take action. And so, we do that in many different ways. First of all, obviously, we do our data team meetings, data team meetings happen every Tuesday, every one of our content teachers, math, science, social studies, and language arts, take part in these data team meetings, completely focused on the CFA data, so that Common Formative Assessment data from the week before, and planning the reteach for those kids who did not meet the target. So, that is, it's still not good? So, that is something that we do routinely. In addition to that, we also meet with Dr. Jimenez and with MGT, weekly discuss attendance data, behavior data, also STAR data, we look at as well when those results come out. So, we try very hard to then create action plans around that. If there's data that requires feedback to teachers, we also decide at that point, who's gonna give the feedback, when the feedback's gonna be given, et cetera. And then, of course, you know, ultimately, our goal here is to increase student achievement, and so, we do have a couple of pieces that we're working on that we have to refine a little bit, but the protocol that we use in order to run our data teams is called the See It, Name It, Do It Protocol. It's been highly successful, a year ago, we didn't have this, and so, it's made a huge difference, and now, we're just trying to make sure that within the time that we have, which is just forty-five minutes, that we're able to get through the protocol with a truly laser-light focus on the reteach and making sure that the kids who didn't meet the standard have that opportunity. And so, that's been a big piece of what we do. Data measurements, it's everything that Tom spoke about, we do STAR data, we look at our CFA data, we also look at our attendance data, we've set goals around that. I'd like to say that at ninety percent, we're feeling pretty good right now with attendance, because it took us a long time to get there. Certainly isn't the goal, but we feel like we're moving towards it. And then, another piece of that data is really looking at our behavior data, and I didn't put that into the data measurements, because it's not one of our major strategies, but a big thing we're trying to do is keep kids in school. And so, we do have somebody who's doing in-school suspension for us at this point, and honestly, the behaviors that we've been dealing with this year are more of the kind of big things versus the little things, and so, ISS has been instrumental in keeping our kids in school, and that's been successful for us as well. And everybody's looking at me like I've run out of time. So, do you have any questions?
So, you talked about being able to differentiate the learning for the students, and they can create and synthesize and explain. A lot of kids can't, I mean, they have to take the assessments and all of that, but as far as taking daily tests or whatever to show that they've learned that standard, do you allow them to do it in different ways as well? Do you differentiate that also?
Yeah, yeah, that's huge for us. I mean, what we do tell our teachers, we don't want things overscaffolded. We know that if we put a scaffold out there and we offer it to every kid, if they're anything like my kids, which they are, they're going to take that route, so we have to make sure that the kids that we're providing that extra support for are the kids who definitely need it. But absolutely, we wanna know what they know, and sometimes that has to be delivered to us in different forms.
Yeah, great, thank you.
I actually just have a little piece of feedback. So, on your strategy two, it's very just general, where your other strategies are awesome, because like, your first one talks about articulate and implement consistent instructional model, it tells you how and what you're gonna do, increase the use of high-leverage strategies, where your second one just is to ensure that every student has access to rigorous learning experience in every content area, which should be very basic, that should be happening anyways. I guess I just would, am interested in finding out if there's something that we can just put in there that really helps it make more of a course of action, as opposed to just a general statement. I don't know, I just, all your other ones are, and when I was looking at all the others, they tend to have a little bit more meat on them that specifically says, and I think, Vice Princip, sorry, the Vice Principal had said, she, the way you said it, I couldn't write it all down, but you actually said it when you were saying it out loud. You weren't reading this, you were like, actually saying what it was, and I just wanted to give that feedback and say that'd be, that's, my recommendation is to add that in there so that it makes, it makes it more of an actual course of action strategy, instead of just a very basic strategy, because everything that you have on here would align with whatever it is that you said, and I couldn't write it all down.
What I'll say to that, and part of that has just been us trying to make sure that we got this into a one-page document, but I am more than happy to share more TGL on that with you, because I've got that written down, and that's in our other documents.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Hi, thank you, guys. I know, it's a lot of information to fit into very little time. I'm curious, it really sparked my interest when you were talking about the collaboration between the two middle schools. So, I'm curious if you've considered including the MTSS and ADVID, because we're trying to align the experience of the students, and again, a lot of my focus is gonna be on disciplinary and just their, the equity and their opportunities between the two schools this year.
Yeah, so, I would, I would say, you know, even though it may not be written at this point, that we're a lot closer than you might think when it comes down to this stuff. I mean, ADVID is obviously very important to us as well, and we've got a, really, we've had a very successful launch to it. I would also say that that would be the case for MTSS. I think we're both doing versions of it right now, trying to make sure that we're doing the best job we possibly can with it. I do think there's gonna be opportunities for collaboration with it. You know, I would just say that right now, there's a lot of big rocks we're moving, and MTSS is definitely a part of it, but the biggest piece right now, we're all focused on is making sure that that tier-one general instruction for our kids within the classrooms is where we're getting the biggest bang for our buck. is, is where we're getting the biggest bang for our buck right this moment. Yeah. And then, can I just, because you had brought up grading, and I didn't know if you were going to go there or not.
I was.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
So, grading for us is also very important. I would say that as far as the breakdown sixty-forty, so sixty percent classwork, forty percent assessment, we're, we're the same. And I don't know honestly where we're different. I will tell you, we don't give grades lower than a fifty. So, the argument is simply this, right? You've got, you've got effectively forty points of success on a traditional scale. And that's if you consider Ds to be successful. And yet, you somehow have sixty points of failure. And so, the argument that we make in the research would support this idea that if you have a kid who gets a zero, I mean, climbing out of that is next to impossible. So, no grades are given that are lower than a fifty. And that is assessment, classwork, homework, whatever. Because if a kid is, you know, getting an F, for example, like, do they need to have a zero? I don't think that sends any real message. And so, we do that. We also make sure that kids have unlimited time, with exception to a bit of a cutoff at the end of a semester or at the end of a quarter, to turn assignments in. And we do not downgrade them on those assignments. We also, and I would say we're about ninety-eight percent clean on this, we don't put anything in the grade book that is not based on the standard. We're not grading tissue boxes. We're not grading extra credit. It is all about the standard.
To kind of add to that, are you doing the same as what Kearney's doing where you're articulating that to the parents, kind of what Connie was speaking to, so they know what they can work at at home?
Yeah, so we, we work really hard to do that. I do think that there are some things that we could be doing better. One of the biggest things that we struggle with, and I'll just say this from my perspective, is that engagement piece. And it's on both ends. Like, we could be doing a better job, but also getting parents into the door. And so, I really liked what Maria had said because it's so true. We were given this huge blessing in a way to learn how to do these remote meetings. And my fear is that people became very used to those. And I think that like for me, in my kid's school, I'm there if I can hop on the computer. So, I think we, we don't want to run away from that because I think that format is extremely powerful and it gets more people in the door.
And then, my last question, and I'll leave you alone. I, my work is around teachers. So, I'm curious if the daily walkthroughs and the leadership walkthroughs, if the feedback, if you've received feedback from the teachers, if that's helpful or a hindrance.
So, with the daily walkthrough, we truly are just trying to see what the trends are in the building very quickly. Initially, they were apprehensive, and it was like, what are you looking for? We were very clear with them what we are looking for, and we've seen that it does make a difference. It's not something we go to teachers on. It's just for own information. If we do see, for example, there's a trend with a particular group of teachers where we're not seeing objectives, then that's a conversation we get to have. But one of the things that we've worked really hard to do at Adam City Middle School over the last several years is make sure that teachers understood that our goal is nothing, you know, but helping them get better at what they do. And so, that takes a high level of trust. And so, it is very common for us to be walking through classrooms and sometimes just to see kids. So, creating that atmosphere has allowed this work to be a lot easier for us.
Thank you.
I did have one last one before. I know, I know. Mine was, my last one was really around, you said you didn't include discipline in your data measurements. But I think discipline and attendance have been, at least at Adam City Middle School, one of those things that was, one of those data points that kept getting highlighted because of the discipline percentages in comparison to the other middle school. We were like, well, what's going on?
Oh, yeah, we know, we know.
What's going on?
Yeah.
But I think that it wouldn't be a bad idea to actually include those, especially because Adam City Middle School, I think people tend to forget that your parents are so much further away than Kearney's parents, Kearney's families.
Yeah.
When it comes to distance, that makes a huge, huge difference for families to participate, to bring their kids in on time, to, you know, come and whatever it is that you're asking them to do when they live in, you know, Thornton and they have to travel all the way up here and if they have to get a ride and they don't have a car or take the buses. All of that is, you know, I think people tend to forget that our families that come to Alsup and, and Adam City Middle School have a little bit more challenges than the ones that are in the neighborhood. So, with that being said, I think that it's not a bad idea to somehow, you know, highlight that because I think that with some of the steps that you're going to do, it's probably going to really improve that, and it just gives you a, you know, that baseline's going to come up hopefully. And if you're doing a lot of the steps that Kearney's doing, like around the restorative justice and, oh, did we have them doing, who's the other one? Yes, well, you already mentioned that, then I think a lot of that's going to really help in those areas for you guys, so just another.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and we are ready for the last school presented tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Loría. So, at this time, I would like to turn it over to Principal DeGuero, who is going to go over the Unified Improvement Plan for Lester Arnold High School. Principal DeGuero?
Madam School Board President Lewis, Madam Superintendent Dr. Loría, and esteemed School Board members, good evening. My name's Tom DeGuero. I am the proud principal of Lester Arnold High School. I'm here today to share with you a brief presentation of our 2021 UIP. Our UIP is going to focus on two major improvement strategies. Our first major improvement strategy will be to ensure rigorous grade-level instruction with emphasis on grade level. Historically, our mission at Lester Arnold has been to serve students who are overage and undercredit. We work hard to reengage students who often come to us with deficits in their prerequisite skills, deficits in their credits, deficits in their English language acquisition, and they often have attendance issues, sometimes due to circumstances beyond their control. We have a culture that is safe and welcoming, where teachers make strong and supportive connections with our students. We have always relied on academic growth as our major contributor to our school performance framework. We recognize that this is not enough. If a student is four years behind grade level proficiencies when they come to us, we're doing a disservice to that student if we focus only on gaining a few years, but fail to give them rigorous grade-level instruction. With this UIP, we plan to shift our focus to the district-identified Big Rock Number One rigorous grade-level instruction. We will benefit from the work of our district curriculum directors, Amber Gardner, Eileen Hardner, and Michelle Gennaro, and others, who have been working hard to create curriculum apps along with the common assessments and a calendar to support and guide our grade-level instruction. Our action steps will include ongoing progress monitoring of unit planning, data-driven instructional practices and high-level student discourse to ensure grade-level appropriate instruction, ongoing observation and feedback of instructional best practices, which will include things like clearly-written objective, content objectives, high-quality first instruction, timely interventions, and emphasis on academic language. In addition, we'll also be looking for closure to every class that includes exit tickets and some sort of data collection to know in the moment how are, how they're progressing in their learning. We will also be including in our action steps, short and long-term goal-setting with teachers and continued professional development focusing on differentiated learning using timely interventions. Our second major improvement strategy will be to establish systems to support students in career and post-secondary planning. We feel that students are self-motivated, more successful when they have identified career or post-secondary educational goals. Our action steps for this improvement strategy will include building an advisory class into our schedule called Phoenix Families, where all Lester Arnold teachers will have a Phoenix Family roster that they will stay with all the way through graduation. Through Phoenix Family, students will take interest, skills, and aptitude surveys to match them with appropriate career and post-secondary opportunities. We will develop a profile for each student that can be used to identify and place students into particular CTE pathways that are offered through Adam City High School. We're offering a variety of courses through Pointful Education that are completed online that students, that prepare students to take specific entry-level certification exams. Phoenix Family teachers will also monitor student progress using progress reports, formative assessments, and STAR data, and conduct ongoing one-to-one conversations with all students. All Lester Arnold staff will receive training in the use of Navions to monitor and fulfill our ICAP obligations. And at some point, we hope to expand this initiative with field trips and guest speakers intended to keep kids informed, to enlighten them, to inform them of what careers are out there and what they, what it takes to get to particular careers. As always, be glad to take any questions and hear any feedback that you would like to provide.
Thank you, Mr. DeGuero. I love Strategy Two. I've always believed that our Lester Arnold High School students have such tremendous aspirations, and, and when they're, they feel engaged and they feel like they have a goal, they're, they're, they just do so much better in school. So, I'd love to hear more about that later and how we can support you. I also applaud you for using Navions and ICAP. I felt like we've paid for the service for so many years, and either we don't know how to use it. I remember my son was a senior, and I'm like, this is blank. Like, what was the point of all of this? But I just think opening the doors for all of the opportunities that these students have is going to be awesome. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I, just like Adam City Middle School, I would like to see more under Strategy One, just as to how you're going to do that. Because one of the things that I heard you say, I just, I guess for me, the word deficit means deficit, and I don't think our kids have deficits. I think they have challenges. They have challenges that they come with. The deficits are on our end because we're trying to meet certain criteria and certain numbers. But I think that our kids, especially yours at Lester, they come with certain sets of challenges that other kids might not have. So, I would just say that, yeah, I would caution us on using those words because once again, we want to change the culture of how people see our kiddos and the fact that they're amazing and they do some amazing things over there. You have some amazing staff too that just go above and beyond working with these kiddos. That is one of the things. And then, you talked about creating student profile, and so, just like Renee was saying, I love the idea of doing those, I don't know if there are, just kind of like a survey as to where, where they land on or what their assets are, because I've heard that from a lot of kids in other realms. They're like, you know, nobody really tells me what I'm good at, and I don't even know how to figure that out. And I really like this, but they keep telling me I should do this. So, I think it's great. I applaud you guys for looking at that and doing some analysis for creating that profile to help the kiddos. And then, on your data measurements, one of the things that, again, I think would be nice to see is besides the attendance, now, we know that attendance, and I am guilty of that too with my kids, it's hard sometimes to get them all there, but especially at your school because they don't have buses. We were told they did, but I don't, I asked, and everybody's like, nope. And I'm like, I haven't seen any at Lester. There aren't really any buses, but we need to work on that because if you're going to have these kiddos be able to access the resources that are at Adam City High School for CTE, we definitely need to make sure that we have an equitable way of providing them that resource and having them get that opportunity. So, I think that, that's, that's just what, you know, came to mind is how do we do that? So, for the attendance, probably just adding as well as discipline because I know that it's different at Lester, and you guys do a great job. So, I think, you know, it's one of those learnings with all of these. I think that we tend to forget, just like we say deficits, that we all have challenges, but every school does something that they're really good at, that I think that if we could just take that and replicate it or, you know, share it, it would really help across the district. But anyways, that's just my feedback. Thank you.
Can I add one more thing? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Zubia.
Let me, let me respond to using the word deficit. It maybe has a negative connotation. It's not referring to students' abilities, but we do need to acknowledge when they come to us and we do a STAR test and their math score shows sixth grade, I identify that as a deficit in a certain level of number of skills and abilities that they should have coming into ninth grade. So, I don't mean that to be a negative comment or reflective on the student itself. We recognize that there's been difficulties in showing mastery in the past, and we want to find out what those difficulties are and address those. So, be very intentional about that. So, I don't mean that to be in any way negative toward saying our kids are deficient, but there's some learning to make up.
I wanted to add just a super quick comment around Strategy One. I'm curious if you would consider adding relevant and engaging in there somehow? Where I'm going with that is engaging just to kind of push us as a board to allocate the resources. I hear a lot from students like, oh, I want to take my group of students to a field trip at, say, Sutlethro or something, or participate in an internship. And I feel so bad when it seems like it's a barrier or the teachers are having to do fundraisers or something. I just, I wonder if we incorporate it into the UIP that that would kind of force us to make sure we're allocating the resources the right way.
Thank you. That's, that's very good advice. We'll, we'll try to write that in with Stephanie's help. Okay, thank you.
So, like Ms. Zubia, I was concerned about the partnering with Adam City High School for the CTE classes, and I know that, you know, it takes a lot of work with the schedules and, and then we, you know, we don't have a lot of bus drivers anyway, and but, you know, to, to work more closely with them and with the scheduling similar to like the middle schools do, you didn't really talk about how you, you know, you work with Adam City High Schools.
We, we started along this path midway through last year when some of these opportunities were made available to us. When we get students, we usually turn over our student population almost fifty percent every year, new students. We get them in August, we get a list, we start finding out what their needs are. At that time, we really don't know which students are interested in which career pathways. So, our, my goal with our second major improvement strategy is to create that database and make it part of a screening process when they come into Adam City. Along with knowing their, if they have a REIT plan, if they have an IEP, if they have a behavior plan or an attendance plan, we want to know, if we can, what career paths they may be already interested in or what educational paths they're already interested in so that we can make that appropriate placement, say, and tell a student, hey, you know what? You really have an interest in culinary arts. Adam City High School has the best culinary arts program in the state. We're going to arrange your schedule so that you can take afternoon classes, take your morning classes in their program at Adam City, take your afternoon classes here at Lester Arnold or vice versa. So, Adam City's been very helpful in making that work such a way that it can be half here, half there. We have, right at this point, two students that we've identified, they're in the construction career skills or construction management type classes at Adam City. We're starting with those, hope to build some successes. And then, as we move forward, for those students that we do have, get as juniors, we're going to be, find out, have their, who they are, what their skills or aptitudes are. So, by the time they're seniors, we have a plan for them. But that's going to be part of a problem right now when we get them. If they come to us, sometimes we take, we take ten to up to twenty students every quarter. So, you know, it's kind of hard to match them with a, with a path, and we're working on the, on the logistics of that. And that's, that's where we're headed. I know we're in the beginning stages, and we got a lot of work to do, but that's what we want to do eventually.
Yeah. I was just thinking, you know, sometimes the reason the students are at Lester Arnold because they've had, not had success at a traditional school and because they weren't engaged with learning. engaged with learning and stuff, and I think, you know, it could help them with the CTE program if they have something that's engaging, that wants, makes them want to come to, to your school and then, you know, go to the CTE programming. So, thank you.
Yeah, that's exactly what we hope to accomplish. So, uh, thank you. If there's any other questions or any other feedback, you know, that comes up later, please feel free to, uh, let me know. Sorry, Connie.
That's okay. Uh, I just wanted to compliment you, because, um, you know, I was part of that Lester's enrollment and that, so I kind of know how it's looked for years. And I passed by your school not too long ago, and I saw this flood of students out there, and I thought, that's wonderful. It was like lunchtime or something, or, I don't know, but it, it was just great to see that many student bodies there, you know? And I thought, Tom, you gotta be doing something right there. So I wanna congratulate you on that, because I was part of that enrollment, so I know that. And I, I don't know how many you have now.
We were up to about two sixty-one at one point, but...
It, it did look like it, because there was a lot of bodies out there. And I thought that looked wonderful. And most of all, they were on your grounds before they would go across the street. So, um, I wanna congratulate you on that, and I wanna congratulate you on your NAM Year Award.
Oh, that's right. Congrats.
Support, the, um, opportunity and the nurturing, and, and a big part of that is making sure they know that they can, that they never allow to doubt themselves. And I try to transfer that in to, uh, anybody who wants to listen, that are, they can do that academically also. There's no barriers, if they believe in themselves, we're gonna get them, get them to where they wanna go. I'd like to just kind of mention also to this group, uh, we have an Adam City, former Adam City student, uh, you may have heard, Danella Scano, who is, uh, is now working for NASA. So we've had successes academically at the highest level, and she designed, and she's, uh, a part, the space shuttle, it's a small part, I guess, but, uh, she's, and I'd like to see that we can maybe bring persons like her back into our building. Part of that second improvement strategy is to expose our kids to those opportunities and know that this young lady sat in your same desk seven, eight years ago, and now she's working for NASA designing parts for the space shuttle. You could do this too, we can help you, we can get you there. So I'd like to kind of, uh, you know, um, illustrate that as where this second improvement strategy comes from. So, thank you.
No, thank you. I want to say that for a few years now, we've been saying we need to bring back some of our alumni that have, um, you know, been in those same seats as our kids, um, just so that our kids realize that there's a huge, broad world out there, and a lot of our alumni are out there. I mean, there's a lot of them, doctors, nurses, football players, um, you know, just everything and anything they wanna be. What? Oh, yes, yes. Politics too. So anyways...
Joe Williams, Joe Williams, and you had Dominic Moreno, yeah, so...
Yeah, so thank you for that. Um, and then I just wanted to add for, a little plug for Lester. Um, I know that, uh, they have, uh, like we said, a lot of challenges, but for the past however many years I have noticed, um, I don't know how the budgets are, um, once they get to the next level, how they're allocated, but I would love to find a way, like, um, Ms. Lovato was saying, to actually really put more resources there, because I see the need is there, it has been. I know that the space is small, that's something that needs to be looked at, but almost like a wish list of what we would love to see at Lester, um, to really help build that momentum that they have, or continue it anyways, um, because I think that for the longest time, we keep forgetting that we have two high schools, not just one. We have two, although it's an alternative, it's still a high school, and they deserve as much attention as the others, and we wanna make sure that they're not, um, being overlooked with however, however that formula is of those resources that are being allocated. Um, because I know my kid was, was worth twenty kids and you were not getting, you're really getting one. So, um, somehow, I would love to see, um, that equitably distributed amongst our schools. Just putting that out there, and I don't know if this would be the right way to do it, by putting whatever we need into the, oh, the UIP, but...
It might start with a bigger building, but that's just an idea.
We're, step one. Step one. We've been, we have ideas.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all the comments and feedback. Um, Mrs. Redditt's next step will be to work with our school leaders to incorporate those in. Uh, on October twelfth, our next schools will come in, those that were not here tonight. And then on October eighth, we will send you all the PDFs of each of our schools, in addition to the upcoming schools, uh, one-pagers for, uh, your consideration, and then to take action on the twelfth. Our deadline to submit our UIPs is on October fifteenth, uh, to put them into the state's, um, system. Uh, what that also means is that we can also come back and make amendments and revisions as needed throughout the school year, uh, based off of any of the work that we have in data sets as we get them throughout the school year. So I wanna take a moment to thank our school leaders for joining us and all the work that you did at your school. Uh, but at this time, Dr. Loria, that concludes our UIP presentation.
Thank you very much. I wanna thank, uh, the academic team, Michelle, Stephanie, and Sheila. They actually worked, um, a lot in, of course, our principals, uh, for their hard work. Actually, you know, you, last year, the UIPs were due in the spring. So this year, CDE changed their deadline, so now we're, um, catching up. So it, it was a lot of work and lessons learned, uh, we will be using next year. The goal is to be using some of the professional learning days that we have with our principals so that they can engage in, um, work and, and planning how to bring their communities so that, uh, you actually get to see them way before, a few days before their, um, due. But I want to thank each one of them, they have been working, um, very hard, and, uh, and I, I wanna publicly say that your work is valued, and we appreciate everything that you do for our students, so, and of course, our team, they have been working so hard. Uh, Michelle, you need to see her on skate, uh, board, or, you know, she just is rolling down in the hallway supporting all the schools, so, uh, so it was, um, it was nice to see the team just all, all hands on deck, so, thank you very much.
Well, thank... Thank you all for, um, your hard work. We sincerely appreciate it. So with that, um, our study session, oh, yes ma'am?
I just wanna thank, uh, the community schools. Have you forgotten y'all? Uh, because you have been doing this a long time, um, the walkthroughs and all the restorative justice. You know, I go back to when I was working in the schools, we didn't call it restorative justice, but when I was at HES, we called it crisis assistance team. And the whole staff had to have that training. And it really, um, it really helped the, the administration, the body, and it helped most of all, the students, you know? And we followed, as you said, the IEPs. We knew what was going on with each student, because we were part of the training. So it really does help, and I wanted to say thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana. Um, so that concludes our study session, and thank you so much for being here, we appreciate it. Um, we do have a need for an executive session this evening, um, for the purpose of CRS twenty-four-six-four-oh-two-four-A, real estate regarding the old ALSA property, CRS twenty-four-six-four-oh-two-four-B, legal advice regarding the state accreditation orders, and CRS twenty-four-six-four-oh-two-four-F, personnel matters for board staff. So, um, may I have a motion to move into executive session? Thank you. Thank you. Um, Monica, roll call, please.
Is that second by Ms. Lovato?
Ms. Zubia?
Ms. Willis?
Aye.
Ms. Lovato?
Aye.
Ms. Quintana?
Aye.
Ms. Zubia?
Aye.
So it is now seven forty-six, and we will move into, which room, Monica?
They need to get changed on one side here.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Thank you. And we have no further business after the executive session, so we'll adjourn after that.